All right, well, welcome, everybody. So we're about to start the school board forum here. We have the trustees that are running for the upcoming year. My name is Jordy Bronson. I'm with the Chamber of Commerce. We have the pleasure of putting this event on in collaboration with the local press. And Amanda is going to take over and just let everyone know the rules and guidelines for the night.
Thank you very much for coming, everybody. I just want to go over some housekeeping rules. We have a couple of question stations. So we have a question station over by Brandy, who's waving, over by the bulletin board. If you want to do a written question, there's another station over here. Or you can come up and use the microphone and we'll ask you to line up behind our moderator, who kindly has come out tonight, Mr. Doug Leeds. I also, for timekeeping purposes, I ask that we not do applause after each of the questions so that we can keep things rolling. I also ask that you put your cellphones on silent. And I want to let you know that the forum is being recorded and it'll be available to view tomorrow on the Chamber YouTube and the Local Press YouTube pages as well. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn this over to... Oh, sorry, I missed the very important part of our rules. You have 30 seconds to ask a question. We ask that you keep your questions brief and to the point so that we don't have live stories being shared and that we can roll things along quickly. I will now pass this over to our moderator.
Thanks, Amanda. Amanda, anyhow, well, thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight. And the names have been drawn for opening remarks. A little drumroll. So our first one up is Brad Toon.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. My name is Brad Toon and I'm seeking reelection as your trustee. Excuse me. My roots run deep here in our community. I am a fifth-generation farmer and I understand the values and the hard work and unique needs of our rural families. Like many of you, I'm personally invested in the future of our division. I have two daughters currently in high school and a son who will be starting kindergarten next year. Their success and the success of every student in Livingston Range is my top priority. My dedication to serve extends beyond my family and farm. I also volunteer as a fire... volunteer firefighter here in Clare's Home, a role that consistently reinforces my commitment to safety and wellbeing of our residents. This commitment is what I bring to the board table. In my 12 years as a trustee, I have never missed a monthly board meeting. I haven't just warmed a seat. I've been a fierce advocate for our division, both locally and provincially. I've been involved in numerous provincial education groups and committees. I currently have the honour of being board chair of the Rural Caucus of Alberta School Boards, representing over 40 school boards serving thousands of students across the province. This role gives us a powerful voice and ensures the unique challenges and needs of rural education are heard and addressed at the highest levels. My focus is clear: to champion success for all students and to fight for improved classroom conditions throughout Livingston Range. This means ensuring our teachers have the supports and resources they need and that our students have access to the best possible learning environment, no matter where they live in our division. I have the experience, the dedication, and proven track record to continue to lead effectively. And tonight, I look forward to sharing more with you about my vision and hearing more from you about yours. Thank you.
Lost it. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Brad. Number two is Carla Gimber.
Good evening and thank you for being here. My name is Carla Gimber and I'm running for reelection as your school trustee. As a parent of four students and a professional with over 20 years in financial services, I bring both heart and fiscal responsibility to every decision. I believe that when we invest in education, we invest in the soul of our communities. My journey began when my son started playing... started play school in Staveley. I wanted to contribute to the community we chose to call home. That led me to volunteer with groups like FCSS and the Youth Hall and now the Staveley Elks Royal Purple, the Nanton Legion, 4-H, and several sports boards. My first term was anything but typical. It started in the wake of the pandemic and immediately involved complex issues, beginning with vaccinations, then the four-day school week, and later labour negotiations. I was proud to support Granum's Future, the launch of Peak's Campus, and new and modernized schools in Nanton. It all wrapped up with the hiring of a new superintendent. Each challenge demanded thoughtful leadership, collaboration, and a willingness to learn. I'm running again because I believe in the power of public education. Over the past term, I've worked to understa... I've worked to understand community needs, support meaningful change, and represent families across LRSD. Looking ahead, I'm focused on three priorities: equity in education. Every student deserves access to quality learning, no matter where they live. We must advocate for fair, adequate funding, especially in rural divisions. Mental health and wellbeing. Schools need trained professionals and strong partnerships to support students and staff. Community engagement. Families want timely transparent communication and meaningful ways to be involved. I envision a school division where collaboration thrives, innovation is welcome, and every student feels safe and inspired. I'm here to listen, learn, and lead, and I hope to earn your support on October 20th.
Thank you. Carol Gimber. You'll notice I missed the B. So next, we have Greg Graves. Number three.
Is that better? Okay. Here we go. Do I get my two minutes back? So my name is Greg Graves. I've been... me and my wife moved to Nanton about 20 years ago. We have four kids. Two have finished high school, one graduates this year, and then I've got another one in grade eight. As to what I've done for a profession, I'm a 25-year entrepreneur, self-employed in residential construction. In the last couple of years, I got my real estate licence as well. When I'm not chasing kids around and my wife, I am heavily involved in the community in Nanton. I have been a member of the Nanton Boosters Club for about 17 years. I'm the president of the Nanton Community Athletic Society, as well as the Bus Society. And just two years ago, I did run in the by-election for the LRSD Board Trustee. And I was unfortunately knocked out by Kathy here. But in saying that, it did bring a spark to what I thought I should do. When you lose something that you didn't know you really wanted, but then you lost it, it made me want to do more within the school system. So in saying that, I was able to work with another member in Nanton and we created the Nanton School Enhancement Committee. And that committee is to raise funds for the new schools that are being built in Nanton. So in the last two years, that committee has come together and raised over $250,000 with... hopefully by November 1st, here we'll be closer to $350,000. And we have a goal of reaching $690,000 in order to have a larger learning commons, as well as amphitheater in our school on AB Daily. And then on top of that, we've also want to raise around $300,000 for the JT Foster, whether that be a program in trades or something along those lines. So the biggest thing for me is that you need to understand that although I did move out and get and start the Nanton School Enhancement Committee, I am probably the least important member of that committee. And that's where the community comes in and is involved. The six or seven other members that are part of that community are the heart of that board. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kathy Charchen. Charchen.
Good evening, everyone. I'm honoured to be seeking reelection as your school board trustee for award one. I was born and raised in Nanton and graduated from JT Foster School. For 30 years, I had the privilege of serving in Livingston Range as a teacher, a principal, and a divisional math lead. Besides my divisional work, I've worked in six schools across four communities alongside students, families, and staff, in classrooms, gymnasiums, hallways, parent council meetings, and much more. My career has been filled with unforgettable moments: celebrating graduations, organising school dances, Christmas concerts, supporting families through tragedies, and navigating change and challenge. Through it all, one thing has never wavered: my commitment to kids. Every decision I've made has been guided by a simple question: what is best for our students? I truly value and live a student-based philosophy. I will make decisions from... only from the standpoint of what most benefits students. By that, I mean student safety, caring, inclusion, and student learning. Since being elected in 2023, I've brought that same commitment to the board table. As your current trustee, I believe the decisions start with listening. I'm committed to representing our communities by hearing diverse perspectives and ensuring that student voices and local priorities guide my work. I bring an informed, research-based approach to decision-making, using data and proven practices to strengthen rural schools and maintain high-quality education close to home. My experience gives me a broad understanding of how schools function, from the people cleaning the hallways to the teams shaping policy. And that helps me ask the right questions and advocate for what truly matters, some of which include student success and wellbeing, strong rural schools, responsible use of resources, and collaboration with parents and staff and the wider community. Livingston Range has been my home for most of my life. I care deeply about our schools, our families, and our future. I would be honoured to keep serving as your trustee.
Thank you. And last, we have Kevin Todd.
Hello, thank you for coming out to listen to why we want to represent and serve on the trustee board. My name's Kevin Todd. I've resided in Nanton pretty much my entire life, since age two. Too fat all, two years old. So I had the opportunity to attend JT Foster from grade six to 12, graduated there. I was there for opening day of AB Daily and I saw the last day the door shut. So that's interesting to watch that come full circle. Education's near and dear to our dinner table. My wife works in the library and is also a teacher's aide. My oldest daughter is in Lethbridge, pursuing a teaching degree. So she will be in the education forefront in the landscape of Alberta. So it's important that we have an opportunity for them to be educators at the best level they can coming out of school. My professional background comes from finance. So the budget here, I was looking at it today with a keen eye. So I bring that to the... with a background. Oil and gas background, engineering background, and public sector accounting. Three pillars I'm campaigning on is transparency, open communication, and thoughtful decision-making. So whatever hits our table with those three items, we should be able to come to a decision that would be the best for administrators, students, teachers, and for the province alike. So transparency, whenever we can do business in open, I think it's important we do business in an open environment for all to see. Communication is set up upfront as how, when, and who we will communicate. And then the last one is just ensuring that our decisions are thoughtful. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay, thank you to all of you. We'll open it up for questions from the floor now. So if anyone wants to come up and give us a question, have at her. If not, I'll pull out of my pile. Going once. Okay, here we go.
Hi, this question is for Ms. Charchen. As a teacher, you would have been in the system the last teacher's strike in 2002, correct? And now, as a trustee, what is the biggest difference that you have observed between the nature of the strike in 2002 and the one that we're having right now?
That's a really interesting question. Yes, I was working as a teacher in the 2002 strike. I think I was about 10 years in, so I call that relatively new after 30-plus years. From a teacher perspective, it... it's difficult. It was... it was difficult. It's very emotional. You're leaving behind the students that you care deeply for. We were ruled ordered back and went to work to rule, and that was even more difficult because it's kind of... It was more difficult to do the educational piece, but not the other part. I was really highly involved in student leadership at that time and not being able to follow through with that. From a trustee perspective, I would say that emotionally, I'm less involved in... in one way and not in another. Once you're a teacher, you're always a teacher. As you know, we are not part of the provincial bargaining. We want our students to be back to school as soon as possible. And I guess I shouldn't say "we," you asked me. And I am really hoping that we can get back where students can be served the way they deserve and need to be served. Thank you.
Is there anyone... any more questions? Here we go.
I wasn't going to ask any, but I'll direct this to Brad. Brad, as Chair of the Rural Caucus, how is that group able to leverage with the province? And, you know, what kind of advantages do you feel it's able to bring back to our local school board? Thanks.
Thank you so much for the question. The group started as a transportation group. We were struggling with transportation funding in the province and we got together as boards to meet on that. And we just found that there were so many similar issues that we could advocate to the government on that we were stronger together than going separately. The metro boards can get a seat at the minister's table whenever they want, but for us, it was challenging. So I get to have the privilege of having one-on-one meetings with the education minister, with my vice chair, former Clerksham resident Scott McPherson, and also having meetings, hosting meetings with the premier. So having that voice is so important and critical because I speak from my area of strength, and that's Livingston Range. Knowing the schools in our area, the example I would give when we need more funding for schools was JT Foster. And we would continue to advocate for those dollars. So I think it's huge for our division to have seats at the provincial table because it's so easy for the government to just ignore the smaller jurisdictions and smaller boards because they have so many other issues on the plate. So I've really appreciated what it's brought to Livingston Range.
Thank you. We got any more questions?
Hi, this is more about a specific question about the Nanton school renovations, both of them that are going on right now. I know that they're currently using the basement or the common areas of the United Church for two years of classes, grades five and six. Was that because there was not enough room in the existing JT Foster School? And is that the same price that the province would pay to bring in a portable classroom, fully serviced onto an existing school site? Or are we getting shafted because we're agreeing to do that?
You want it to the existing board members or probably? Kathy? Oh, yeah. Okay, start down there. Kathy, go.
Sure, I'll just say a small piece and leave some for my colleagues. First of all, when you... when we're talking about the portables, portables are not available. The city schools are jammed and growing and growing. In fact, I think I just read the other day that Rocky View School Division is looking for 18 new portables right now as we speak. So that was not an option, and I will let my colleagues add to that.
We'll go right down the line. Carl, if you want to.
Yeah, I can add a little bit to that. The decanting process is not something that's funded by the Alberta government. It has to come out of the school division's budget. So one of the strategies we used for that was to approach community spaces and ask for spaces to be donated or maybe discounted price on what they normally would rent the spaces out for. So... but to directly answer your question, no, there was not enough space to house every single student in JT Foster.
Thank you. Greg, did you want to add to it?
I don't have any information on that.
Kevin, no. Brad, your turn.
Just want to say that I agree with what's been said, that we appreciate the community stepping up and supporting because it's huge with not having space to house the kids all in JT Foster. The community partnerships are huge. We want to make sure that the kids can stay in the community because some other rural jurisdictions actually bust their students outside of their community for the two years of renovation or modernisation or new builds, which isn't ideal for anyone.
Thank you. Anyone else want to jump up here right now? I've got written questions to go if you so desire. Here we go.
A question for anyone that would like to take it. I've noticed over the last decade that the funding model for students has changed. And out of that change in the funding model, sports in schools have really suffered. We're seeing less funding dollars going to supporting programs, being able to get jerseys, even busing so that those kids can go and do these events. Do you have any comments or vision or changes that you'd like to make?
Thank you for the question. As also a volunteer coach, having coached with you, Jordy, and volunteer bus driver, it's really hard to see our kids go without when we had so much when we were growing up in the community. That's something that the division has taken really seriously. And we recently had a study that was done with athletic directors and what supports we could do to help enhance the athletic programs in our jurisdiction. And those came with a list of recommendations. So the new board will be making decisions based on those recommendations. I agree, we need to invest in our kids because the health and wellbeing of our kids is sports and activities and extracurriculars that they do. It's not just the academics that our kids need to get enhancement from our community schools.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to tackle that? Okay.
Thank you. I would just like to add that sports was a big deal in my years of going to school. One of the things that I think, well, I don't think I know, that is a little bit different is that when I... okay, it was a long time ago. But when I went to school, we had a practice and a game a week. And the cost was not near as high. Where I know, I've got a husband who coached footballs for a number of years, where it was every night and weekends for tournaments. So the cost has increased, but I... which is part of the problem. We need to get innovative and creative to make sure that all kids have that ability to play, not just the ones whose parents can afford to support that.
Thank you. Kathy? Oh, Carla, sorry.
Oh, we're good. So one of the things I think is that there's less students right now in the schools than there used to be 10 years ago in order to make the teams. There is an opportunity, certainly, to think outside the box and maybe do some collaboration between teams... between schools. Bring students from the high school in Nanton to the students and collaborate them with the students in Clare's Home and make teams that way. There's opportunities for coaches and parents to get their S endorsement and be able to volunteer and drive buses. Like, there's definitely things that we can explore as a board to help support sports programs.
Kevin?
I just want to, for sure, part of our role as trustees would be advocacy. And I know in my local school, high school rodeo is big. So I think that's part of our role, is to ensure that the culture of our school stays intact. Sports is a big part of that and funding is also important. So, and again, with hockey and some of these other sports, they're expensive. We need an option for folks to play volleyball, basketball in an economic environment, so it's important.
Thank you. Greg, did you want to kick it?
Yeah, I can try to say basically the same as what everyone else is saying at the end of the day. I've got kids that play hockey and also want to participate in high school sports. And those high school sports are expensive. Like, for a simple volleyball season, it's like $600 to $700. And I can play, one of my boys can play hockey for that much for six or seven months. So it does need to be addressed at the school level, at LRSD level. So I would definitely be an advocate and help to figure out ways that we can get around that. Because you can't just go to the community all the time, obviously, being involved in the community. We donate large sums of money to the schools for those sports. So I would honestly have to bring that to the attention of the board for sure.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to hit this one. Says for current trustees, what motions and initiatives have you brought forward? That'd be Kathy and Brad, right? Oh, Carla, sorry.
You keep forgetting me.
I need to call you Gimber.
Gimber, Gimber, like timber, but with a G. So the one that I definitely... It's taken me four years to get there, but I'm so proud to finally have support from the board behind it. And that is to explore the feasibility of second languages with the school division. It's something that is near and dear to my heart. I went to school in a French immersion program. And my children have the legal right to be educated in French because we choose to live rurally and enjoy this lifestyle and community and the friends and family that we've come to love here. They're not being able to be educated the way that they have the right to be. And I think that's wrong. Rural equity in education is so important. I could go on and on. If you'd like to speak to me more about second languages of any kind, not just French, we can have tea later at Tim Horton's.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. In case you haven't noticed, and you probably will, that I have an agenda and my agenda is about students and all students. When I joined the... when I became a trustee, I real... We were all assigned our different schools where we would attend the Christmas concert and making sure that all Christmas concerts were attended. I realised that colony schools were not included in that, and I was troubled by that. So I made a motion that we would attend all Christmas concert schools at the colonies, like we do all the public schools. That was declined. I went back. I was determined later on to bring another motion forward where we, each trustee would be assigned two schools. We would work with the colony principal and visit the school once a year. And I'm really proud and delighted to be in the colony schools once a year, spread out among the trustees.
Thank you. Brad?
Cutting trustee pay for driving to meetings. We were paying ourselves double what we paid a bus driver. I felt like that was wrong and that was passed by the board. So we're no longer paid twice as much as a bus driver for us to drive to our meetings. That trustees sit on... in on the hiring of principals, bringing the community voice, that all board meetings are recorded for the regular board meeting and special board meetings. I brought forward one about committee of the whole, but that was defeated at the last board meeting. But I'd bring that one forward at the next one. And that all trustee expenses and superintendent expenses are posted on the website. Those are a few of the ones that I brought forward.
Thank you. Okay, this one evens it up. New candidates, what new motions or initiatives are you planning to bring forward? Greg?
You know, to be honest, I haven't actually thought of what motions to bring forward because it's kind of hard to be on the outside and not know what's going on on the inside. So obviously, I think that if I were to be elected, there'd be a lot of work to get done. And I'd have to get caught up on all the different programs and legislation and what the LRSD actually provides. And I'd be willing to do that work. The biggest thing for me would be how do we actually make sure that our kids are educated well enough to realise what it takes to survive in the real world? Trades, being a tradesman is a big thing for me. So I'd want to make sure that we have those trades programs going throughout LRSD. And if we have to share, whether it be a carpenter or a welder throughout the whole division, it's something that we can look at, right? So those would be the two big things. Make sure that our STEM program is strong, make sure that our trades program is growing. And, you know, make sure that we can educate our kids so they can actually succeed when they step out into the real world.
Thank you. Kevin?
Like Greg, I think I'd want to get the lay of the land a little bit. So my background is in finance, so I would take a look at the financial statements in detail. The budget process would be important to me. One of my pillars were transparency. So I would like to beat Brad to that committee of the whole meeting, making sure it's recorded and documented for all stakeholders to see the work that we're doing around that table. for, for all stakeholders to, to see the work that we're doing around that table. So I think that's where I would start. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone jumping up? Okay, feel free. If you've got a question, stand up and you'll, you shall be able to do. Here we go. See how that worked?
This is to anybody. Look, my son graduated last year. And the graduation was nice, but there were a lot of limited scholarships for a lot of the trades. And our local school is a trade school. And I was wondering how you can reach out and get more scholarships, whether it be carpentry, welding. There's a lot of oil companies and other companies look forward to bringing these young men into their fold. And I'd just like you somehow to see you guys reach out to these young men as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, who would like to tackle? Greg, did you want to try it? No?
Sure, no, absolutely. Yeah, no, scholarships are huge. And I think most of the scholarships that I know that we give away at JT Foster, there's got to be, I know with the Nanton boosters, there's six in total. Some of those are ag, some of those are technology, and some of those are trades. And then there's probably, oh geez, I don't know how many more other than that. But I think that's something that we would have to work together as a, as a community, to be honest. I don't, there's got to be grants out there somewhere. And it's just a matter for us as a community and as an advocate for the community to say, okay, let's go to those companies. Let's see that we, what we can do. And let's see if we can, you know, whether it's $500, $200, or something along those lines. Just recognize that those kids deserve to have, you know, an opportunity and have a little more ease at that opportunity. So it's very important, but I think it's going to have to be done from what I can understand. I don't know if the board can do anything or if the Alberta government does, but we as a community can certainly do it, for sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kathy?
I concur totally with Greg. So I'm wondering if the gentleman that just proposed the question is willing to provide a scholarship. We have to start here. I'm just, I'm just kidding. But I think the more that we can reach out and talk to people and make it, make it known how important scholarships in general are, and in particular to the trades is a, is a great thing. Thank you for bringing that question up.
Thanks. Any, Brad?
No, thank you. Great question. I think one of the things that we're not tapping into is our relationships with our municipalities, our MD and our towns. They have the connections with economic development. They're bringing industry into our communities and surrounding areas. So we need to help leverage their relationships with the people in our community in the business area and help not only bring scholarships and grants and things like that in, but also help see the needs that are, are there for training for students and future workforce that we're trying to bring to our communities.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just chime in quickly. Is, last night, we had a similar forum in Granum. And we were talking about the RAP program and the need for partnerships with industry. We need welders, we need carpenters, we need trades folks. So looking at lobbying, advocacy for those. And that is the next level, is that partnership with the scholarships to support them through their learning, education, and then help them fund that through scholarships. So, because it's hard work, just like, just like becoming a doctor or a teacher. Like, those scholarships come in handy to pay tuition. So just for the trades, it's the same deal. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, rolling right along. No one's getting up yet. Can the number of school days be increased? Other school districts have more necessary school days than we, than we do. Why do ours, hours seem to be less? Anyone want to dive at that? It might be existing board members. Okay, Brad, Brad, go.
There is legislation that sets out the minimum amount of, of school days that you can have and a maximum. I think that would be a first for, that I'm hearing of, a desire to increase the school days. When we talked about the four-day school week and possibly going full-day Fridays in a recent engagement, there wasn't, there was, colonies were the big ones that wanted their kids full-time in school. But our community schools, there wasn't a huge desire for, to increase the number of that by going to full-day Fridays. For example, they liked yearly dismissal. So I think if that's something that parents are asking for, we should engage on that and kind of see what, what their thoughts are on it.
Anyone else? Greg?
I'll just say on behalf of parents, I know with my kids, it seems like every other Friday, they have a day off. And there's lots of PD days that are throughout the year. So I think that it's something that we as a board can certainly look at to see how that we can best, you know, I don't know the full ins and outs. So there's definitely a lot of learning that I'd have to do on my side. But I think that it'd be worth looking at to see how we can best address that issue, right? Because I do believe that there is lost days for the kids to get educated. And we just got to figure out how we can make that up, right?
Okay, Carla?
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that as Brad mentioned, the number of hours is legislated. But one of the things that you'll notice in rural communities is sometimes there's, there's longer days. And it's because of our transportation issues. You'll notice Staveley Elementary School has a longer day than Claire's Home Elementary School does, or West Meadow does because of busing. We, we use West Meadow and, or sorry, we use Staveley and Granum as a hub for the transportation. So because of that, their days are a little bit longer. And therefore, they have a day off in Lew, basically, is how those work out.
Anyone else? I don't know, are we getting more questions back there? Randy? Okay, okay, here you go.
I'm glad I'm from, I represent municipal council. At council, I'm here as, as just a rate payer today. But we have in the municipality, municipal frameworks with all our neighboring municipalities. And they were mandatory. And we were very worried how they were going to work out. They've worked out great. And I wonder if you think that it would be beneficial to the municipalities, rural and urban, and the school division to have some formal engagement process on a semi-annual basis or something to collaborate? So we all know what each other's planning, you know, tomorrow and 10 years from tomorrow.
Okay, who, did anybody want to tackle that? Brad?
I think that's highly needed now more than ever. We've had lots of immigration programs come into Claire's Home. And as schools, they weren't fully prepared for it because they didn't know that those applications were in process. So I think the more we can prepare our communities by working together and meeting and knowing what's on each other's tables and plates, the, the greater chance for partnerships and collaboration will be. We've had some amazing partnerships with our municipalities. Example would be the, the Granum Fire Academy. The municipalities highly invest in our emergency services and have invested heavily in all our communities. And for us to have the ability for students to get training in that, we've already seen out of the most recent cohorts, students graduating and becoming volunteer members of our emergency services in our community. So I think that's a huge benefit. And it just shows that, that collaboration pays dividends. And we need to do more of it.
Thank you. I think, did Carla, did you want to, okay?
Thank you. Yes. So that is actually a motion that I did bring forward in the last term was to have our chairs reach out to the different, the MD and the, and the different towns to set up meetings for our board to attend. We, we have attended meetings with the town of Fort McLeod already and the town of Claire's Home. So it's, it's certainly something that I think is, is beneficial and can lead to a lot of collaboration and support between each other. And just even as you mentioned already, just being able to know what's going on in both the education world and in the MDs in the towns.
I'll do Kathy and then Kevin.
I think the only thing that I would like to add to that is the, through the modernization and rebuild in Nanton, we had a, Carla, Brad and I were part of a Nanton community, sorry, forget the name right off the top. But we were in collaboration with the town of Nanton with the MD of Willow Creek and Ranchlands. And all those perspectives coming together to a table for a common purpose was exciting and very fruitful and highly recommended. So I think the more we do, definitely the better everyone is.
Kevin?
Yeah, I think we all have planning meetings and strategic plans. To share them with the neighbors just makes a ton of sense. It would be like my neighbor building a fence. I'd love to know that he has those plans in there so that I can either help him build it or just know what nuances might be there. So we have the plans we should share with the neighbor. It makes total sense.
Thank you.
Sure, I might as well say so. It's both the same as everybody else. But the more information, the better at the end of the day. And the more we communicate, the better it is.
Thank you. Okay, we got another one here. Okay, got that. One more in the closing statement. Do you have a plan to correct the lack of transport for extracurricular, curricular events? The board mandates take, taking buses, but there is a lack of available vehicles and drivers. Thank you. Brad, go.
One of the things that I've heard a lot through the recent years is challenges with transportation. It's been 20 years since our division's done a transportation review. And I think it's more than time. So that's one of the first things I do if elected at our first board meeting would put on the table a transportation review. It looks at attendance areas and, and how transportation is done throughout all our schools and all our communities. It engages not just with parents and students, but community members to bring those concerns forward. We need to be innovative and be more supportive with our dwindling resources that have been coming from the province. It's getting harder and harder to do things. The, the amount I hear about challenges with bus routes and ride times going up all the time, I think that we need to engage with our, all our stakeholders so they can share their concerns. And we can collaboratively work for solutions to, to solve all those.
Thank you. Kevin?
I think on the surface, 100%, it makes sense that if we're mandating the use of transportation for sports or extracurricular stuff, that we would need buses. So I would support that initiative in any way, for sure.
Yeah, I would say along the same lines. I think the one thing that we have to look at too is that if you have a transportation guideline, you also have to look at the feasibility financially. Because I think part of the, the problem that we have with our transportation now is that it's mandated that you have to use the bus for a lot of your sporting activities. And that's what increases the cost of those sporting activities so much. And whether that's insurance or just, it's a mandated rule by the Alberta government. It has to be addressed again so that we can actually get back to what is feasible for our kids and our parents to pay for transportation, right? So it definitely needs to be addressed.
Okay. Okay, you're good. Okay, before we get into closing statements, we'll ask the people coming in to please keep quiet so we can hear. Thank you. And closing statements, we start with Greg.
Well, in, in closing, who am I? I am a father of four, a husband. And in most days, I wear Carhartts, a tool belt, and a dirty shirt. And I don't mind to get dirty and to work hard. My hand always goes up if there's a need in our community. And I would do the same on the LRSD board. I listen. I like to listen. I like to learn. I like to have conversations that are difficult because you only learn through those conversations. The other thing that I think my biggest asset is that, you know, get a little bit better every single day. So with the LRSD board, that's what I would strive for, is to get a little bit better every day and to learn and to help out as much as possible. So I am excited to be up here. I'm excited to have this opportunity. And I'm excited to be a voice for LRSD. So I really hope that on the 20th, you may look my way. And we can grow together as a community and work together as a community. So thank you for your time. Much appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next, Brad?
Thank you once again for all your excellent questions and for allowing me to share some of my vision tonight. As I close, I want to reiterate that my commitment to this vision is built upon experience, passion, and personal stake in our future. I will continue to be your strongest voice advocating for robust rural education and ensuring we get the supports and funding our students and our classrooms deserve. With everything currently happening in education, we need experience. We need to be innovative. And we need to build on our current strengths and prepare our kids for their futures. We need discussions, we need decisions made closest to our kids and not dictated from Edmonton. Your vote is critical. On election day, I humbly ask for your continued trust and your vote so I can continue to serve, to advocate, and to be, to champion a bright future for all our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
In closing, Kevin Todd, Nanton, I'm looking for your support for the opportunity to serve the area as school board trustee. Service comes from small towns. The volunteer experience that I just heard at this table, it just comes from the rural background. So I want, I want the opportunity to serve the board. Some of the things I missed in my intro was I have a little bit of municipal political background, two terms in municipal council. I also was treasurer for, was future foundation in Nanton. When we lost our rink, the roof blew the roof off. And the community rapidly assembled a group. I was a treasurer. We got a charitable status. We raised money quick. We put the roof on. That is just barn-raising, small town. You just get it done. So education is important. And this is where I would like an opportunity to serve you guys. So keep me in mind when you're in that voting booth on October 20. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you again for being here tonight and for your care and commitment to our schools and the people in them. Serving as your school board trustee is a responsibility I take seriously. I bring extensive experience as a teacher, a principal, a division lead teacher, and now a trustee, and a deep commitment to our rural communities. I know schools from the inside out. And I care deeply about every student, every staff member, every classroom, and every family in our division. As your trustee, I believe the best leadership starts with listening that is grounded in respect, decency, and decorum. I will continue to govern with the attitude that every person deserves to be treated with dignity. I learned that, I see somebody out there, I'm diverting, Dennis Simpson, who I had the privilege of working with when I first started, who exemplified all of those. So thank you, Dennis. I believe we can hold differences without losing our shared commitment to student success and safe welcoming schools. I'll continue to advocate for decisions that reflect both community input and legal responsibility with a focus on what's best for students. We've had important conversations, including the yearly approval of our divisional priorities and budget, four-day school week, hiring a new superintendent, implementing new restrictions on mobile devices and social media, and international travel, to name a few. There's still really important work ahead. I would be honored to consider, I would be honored to continuing serving Ward One. Thank you.
You. Carla Gimber?
As I wrap up tonight, I want to leave you with this. Being a trustee isn't just about policies and budgets. It's about people. It's about showing up with both heart and strategy to make decisions that shape the lives of students, families, and educators across our division. Over the past term, I've learned a great deal about the complexity of our education system, the strength of our communities, and the importance of listening and communicating. I have faced tough conversations and unexpected challenges head-on. And I've worked hard to be a thoughtful, responsive, and committed voice for our communities. But the work isn't finished. I believe in an LRSD where every student is inspired to pursue their definition of success. Every school is equipped with the support it needs. And every family is informed and involved in the decisions that shape their children's education. Realizing this vision requires leadership rooted in compassion, collaboration, and a steady commitment to doing what's right, even when the path is difficult. So tonight, I'm asking for your support. Let's build on the progress we've made. Let's
Let's build on the progress we've made, let's keep the conversations going, continue the advocacy and move forward together. With your help, we can shape an education system that reflects the values, hopes and potential of our entire community. Thank you again for being here, I'm honored to serve and I hope to earn your vote on October twenty.
Thank you to all five of you and appreciate your time put into this. And now we can applaud.